Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator-controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator-controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning, everybody. I am calling our meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. The date today is Thursday, July 28, 2016. It's 8:30 a.m., and we'll begin with roll call.
Commissioner Antor.
Here.
Holter.
Here.
Breavy.
Here.
Bokowski.
President.
Chivas.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Corndyke.
Present.
Mast.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Schroll.
Here.
Steck.
Here.
Tallon.
Here.
Vander Mullen.
Here.
Vonk.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Chair.
Here. We will now move to Agenda Item 3, which is invocation, and I will call on Commissioner Chivas.
Thank you very much. Let me present the Reverend Dr. Thurston Willoughby of the New Life Church of God and Christ. Good morning.
Good morning.
About our heads. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. We ask that you would kindly guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities, so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Chivas. We now move to Agenda Item Number 5, which is public comment. Is there any public comment this morning? Please step to the podium, state who you are and your address. You have five minutes.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Josh Lunger. I live at 1450 13 Mile Road in Sparta. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Grand Rapids Area Chamber. I wanted to just take a brief moment this morning to comment on the surcharge before you this morning, and to say a thank you to -- there was a lot of people involved in the discussions over the last, at least a year and probably more, on this proposal. I want to thank Chair, County Minister de Labio, many of the commissioners who have engaged in many ways throughout this time, the Sheriff's Department, especially undersheriff Michelle Young for working closely with us and her knowledge on many of the issues that have been brought up and answering a lot of the questions that we had. As you know, the Chamber of Board of Directors met last month to consider this proposal and has endorsed it, and we are urging support of it. We believe it provides critical technology upgrades and will provide fair and equitable fire dispatch service across the county and provide a stronger and safer community. That's all I had. Again, thank you for your hard work on this, the diligence, and we encourage you to support it.
Thank you. Any other public comments this morning? I see none, so we will move to Agenda Item Number 6, which is our consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Chivas.
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent agenda, Items A, B, and C.
There's support?
Support.
Commissioner Vander Mullen, questions or comments on the consent agenda? I see none, so this is a roll call vote. I'll call on Holter.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Holter.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Bokowski.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Vonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, motion passes. We now move to Agenda Item 7, which is our resolutions. Before I call on the first one, I will ask Darrell to give us an update on that resolution.
Okay. Under the second "whereas" the title for Hillary Arthur should -- her current title should read Deputy 61st District Court Administrator, not Chief Deputy Court Clerk. 63rd District Court, sorry, I said 63rd District Court. Chief Deputy 63rd District Court Administrator. That's just a minor error, doesn't really affect the intent of the resolution.
But we'd like to get it right.
Yes, absolutely.
And so with that correction noted, I will call on Commissioner Corndyke for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move the appointment of Magistrate Hillary Arthur.
Support? Support by Commissioner Mast. This is -- I'm sorry, first, are there any questions or comments? Very good. This is not a roll call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to the second resolution, and I will call on Commissioner Vonk.
Thank you, Chair. I'll move Resolution Number 59 on this day's date, authorized ballot proposal to increase the county-based 9/11 surcharge by 70 cents a month.
Support? And there's support by Commissioner Vander Mullen. And I call on Vice Chair Schroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the motion to approve Resolution 7, 281659, be amended by substituting the ballot question on the attached Exhibit A with the following. Enhance 911 public safety dispatch to provide dedicated funding to pay for an enhanced 911 public safety dispatch system, including A, technology upgrades including communication towers and new equipment for dispatch in existing police, fire, and public safety agencies; and B, annual funding for fire dispatch as provided in the county 911 service plan. Shall Kent County be authorized to assess an additional 70 cents monthly surcharge on communication service suppliers' billings to service users within Kent County for the period beginning July 1, 2017, and continuing through June 30, 2036? If approved, the additional surcharge would raise an estimated $4,500,000 per year.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank Commissioner Coleman. And just to explain this, we -- so we have a motion on the issue as a whole. We have a motion within the motion to amend the language of the actual ballot proposal. So just to be clear and give you a little background on this, during, I think it was the Finance Committee meeting, some questions were raised about the language, and so that was probably, what, about a month ago almost, when we had that meeting, or three weeks ago? So in the interim, we -- I worked with Darrell, and we brought in some others to just look at it and see if we couldn't clean it up a little bit, make it a little -- read a little simpler, a little cleaner. So that's what we've attempted to do here, and that's the purpose of Vice Chair Schroll's motion. So you did get a copy of this last week already, I believe. We wanted to make sure you had time to see that as well. So right now, we're just dealing with the motion that Vice Chair Schroll has made to amend the language of the ballot proposal. Are there any questions on that item? Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. Just to confirm, I didn't see it, but there are no substantive changes intended in the motion to amend.
Correct. What all we were doing was trying to make it read a little cleaner, clearer. As noted in that meeting, there were some questions about a little awkward sentence structure and so forth. Commissioner Morgan.
Just to be clear, it's not an amendment to the resolution, it's an amendment for the ballot language.
It's an amendment to our initial resolution, but it affects the ballot language. Any other questions?
So we're voting on an amendment first?
Yes, we're only dealing with the amendment first.
Yes, I just wanted to.
Commissioner Tallon, did you have a question?
I'm just surprised we don't have a copy of it before it's --
Well, it was sent out.
No, it's not.
Do you want us to read it again?
Well, sent out by email?
Yeah.
I was just looking at it.
If you'd like to, we can read it again.
The public hasn't seen it, and, okay, all right. I don't need to hear it again.
Again, it's not -- it was no substantive change, it was just basically sentence structure reordering.
Somewhat wordsmithing?
Wordsmithing is a good way to describe it, yes. Because it's, you know, it's going to go on the ballot. We want it to read as clearly and as precise as we can, and there were some, you know, issues raised about whether the term sentence structure was confusing at the earlier meeting.
I guess you should look to Commissioner Hennessy for wordsmithing, so.
So any other questions on that motion? So again, this is Vice Chair Schroll's motion to amend the ballot language. And this is a roll call -- or, I'm sorry, is this a -- just a voice --
Voice phone.
Okay. So all in favor indicate by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we move back to the original resolution itself, which is the substantive motion to approve the 911 enhanced public safety dispatch surcharge. Is -- let's see, we have a motion and support on that, so at this point, any questions or comments? Commissioner Bokowski.
Yeah, just clarity. I recall in our work sessions or in committee that a business has, you know, a significant number of lines. This reads, it's like one surcharge per line. However, that's not actually true, is it? In the sense factually, that there is a significant formula, that if somebody has thousands of lines at a call center, they're not paying thousands of surcharges, correct?
Good morning. So the way it is, you pay one per line for the first 10 lines. After that, you begin to pay one per 10 lines if you're a large center, such as a call center. The only significant offering I have on that, though, is many, many, many businesses, such as a call center, would not operate on individual lines coming in. They would operate on trunks. And then, in that context, you only pay one per trunk. So a trunk can supply up to 100 phones. It has to do with how many simultaneous calls it can support. So most businesses would pay just a fraction of the lines coming in.
Okay. Again, just wanting to be clear, because it's good that we've been endorsed by the chamber, so I would imagine their members would let them know if they didn't like how their formula were impacting them. So again, just being clear that it isn't just one per line. There are some complicated, or more complicated, formula issues.
Correct.
Not in this.
Correct.
But it's understood by this.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Thank you for the clarification.
Vice Chair Schroll.
Thank you, Chair. To speak to Commissioner Bokowski's point, in the amended language, the language reads "the service suppliers' billings." So I think that does speak to the point that you're bringing up. It's not lines, it's stated as billing. So I mean, if you're getting the bills as a provider of many different phone lines, you would obviously know that. So I think that is very clear in the language.
Thank you. Commissioner Mast?
I was just -- I think I vaguely remember seeing that email come in. I did not open it, because I figured, well, we would get a copy here and then I'd take a look. So is it out of the ordinary if we could get a copy of that before we vote on it? I would like to see exactly what it says, and she could read it over again, but we're taking a pretty important vote here. Could somebody go and make a copy of it?
Do you want me to make a copy?
Pam will make a copy.
While we wait for that copy, are there any other questions or comments on the motion itself? Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. We're about ready to, you know, raise a surcharge for a critical service, which I understand totally, and I'm supporting that, without really knowing exactly where we're at on the old surcharge, as far as collection. I know I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I just wanted to reiterate how important it is that we move forward and make sure we try to get the combination to the vault, because I don't have a lot of faith in some of our telecommunications companies, having dealt with them my whole life on a personal level, and watching some of the smoke and mirrors that take place when you're complaining about your bill, I guess. So I just want to say, this is a critical service that I completely support, and I'm hoping if we do end up getting some money that we didn't know was out there eventually, that it goes back to help reduce this surcharge, and it just won't end up back in our general fund. It'll go back to.
Right. So just to a little more background, the surcharge itself is collected by the telecommunications company. It doesn't come directly to the county like a tax would. So in that regard, we have to rely on what we get from the telecommunications company. For whatever reason, the state law that relates to this does not allow for an audit of the telecommunications company as it relates to the surcharge that's paid to the county, and therefore, questions exist about, are we really getting what we're entitled to get? And it would apply both with the old surcharge and the increase in the surcharge, obviously. The county does believe that there should be a right to audit. We have made that a legislative priority in our list of items that we review every year and that we raise with our state legislators. And so that is something that we are working on while this is going on. It's a separate issue from this, but obviously, I would guess everybody sitting at this commission board table today would agree with what Commissioner Antor is saying. So it's something that we do all, I think, agree with, and it's just a matter of staying on that legislative priority. And Vice Chair Schroll, I know, has been very involved in that, and will continue to, as head of the Legislative Committee, to monitor that and push that forward.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Stack?
Thank you, Chair. Again, it is a little bit wide of the issue, but if in fact, an audit program is implemented and there's more collection than we anticipate or have received historically, it doesn't go into the general fund, does it? It will go into the dedicated purpose for which the collection is.
Correct. And Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify the contributions we currently get from our local units. If this passes, is the plan then to let those agreements then just end at their end date, and this funding source would replace that income?
For the fire dispatch portion.
For the fire dispatch portion.
Yeah, the agreements would extend through the end of next year, and those payments would be made through the end of 2017 pursuant to the agreement. After that, we would have agreements to continue providing this service, but the funding mechanism would only relate to the law enforcement portion, not the fire dispatch portion.
Thank you.
Okay. Other, Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair. So I want to echo Commissioner Antor's comments. You know, we've been talking about collecting or not collecting the full amount for the surcharges for probably three years, when the first time Curtis Holt came here and began to talk about this process. I don't see nothing changing. I'm sure the telecommunications lobbyists are probably one of the strongest lobbyists in Lansing, so our hope that we'd ever find a way to make sure we're getting it all is reason enough for me to vote against this today. I mean, when we go to the public and we can tell them, we don't even know if we're collecting the current surcharge, so we want to add another surcharge to it, is just wrong. I mean, if this is a critical service, it should be line item number one on our general fund budget, which people already pay taxes for. The citizens of Kent County already pay enough taxes. All this is, is another tax increase, an enlargement of county government.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Vonk?
Could our undersheriff give us a three-bullet point presentation on what we're getting for this technology? Everybody just talks about the rate increase, but we are getting a whole program with this technology over a period of years, and if you would explain that to the commissioners, so that it's more than just a surcharge increase.
Yes, sir. The capital improvement, the primary capital improvement that you're going to see will affect our interoperable communications. Essentially, right now, we operate on a whole host of radio systems within Kent County, and this will allow us to transition everybody to one radio system, so that we can work in coordination with each other to meet the needs of the community, either preventative, like if you're going to be at a planned event, like a festival, or a triathlon, or a marathon, or in response to a critical incident, such as maybe something happening in one of our larger facilities. We cannot manage these calls with one agency, which means we can't manage them all on one channel. We need to get people all together and coordinate that communication. This radio improvement will do that. It will also bring in our EMS. It will bring in our fire departments and help coordinate them more effectively. And probably the most significant issue is that the radio system that we will transition to is supported and connected to the rest of the state and to federal entities, and continues to be improved incrementally, so that it will continue to support the needs of the communities that it's there for. So that's all things that we can't do as just Kent County Sheriff's Department, the Grand Rapids Police Department, you know, Plainfield Fire Department. We have to work in conjunction to get that done, and it's such a significant improvement to our infrastructure that we need to plan for a capital investment to get that done. There's other improvements that we'll be able to make that are much smaller. We're hoping to transition to NextGen 911 in the next several years. That won't be directly paid for by this, but it does allow us to use resources. We are already collecting the channel towards that effort. And obviously, we've already talked about some of the infrastructure that we've already put in place to allow for this interoperable communication, which is the only way we can support public safety needs in our community.
And how many towers and radios are we getting over time?
Don't quote me on the exact number, but it's over 5,000 what they call subscriber units, which could be either a mobile radio, or what they call a portable radio, or it could be a pager. That would be throughout our community, to every department. Towers, there are 12 total towers in the simulcast system that we're going to put in. Many of them are existing that are being approved. At least one will be a lease, it wouldn't be owned by anybody, the county or the state, but there's a lot of infrastructure that's being improved that we already have.
Thank you.
Michelle, you might want to note, too, that timing on this is really critical, and the fact that by doing this now and getting this done now, we're going to be saving a significant amount of money, which in the end helps lower -- you're getting more for the dollar. You maybe want to mention that?
It's absolutely accurate. The equipment that we're getting has a list price value far in excess of what we're paying for it. And beyond that, Motorola, who is the contractor for the state of Michigan, has offered us an opportunity to save even more money if we're able to get this done during this current year and able to sign a contract by the end of December. And we're literally saving $6 million to have it done within this year, as opposed if we even did it the same time next year.
And that in turn is going to allow every jurisdiction, every city, every township, every EMS, everything to communicate, you know, together interoperability, as they say.
It is essential that we all move to this technology at the same time. It's what they call a forklift upgrade, and it's because our old systems are not compliant with the new system. And in order to make it work, if we don't transition altogether, we'll have a series of patches in place, which cause delays, cause delays in communication, it cause opportunity for failure, and in some instances, a single point of failure. If one radio device doesn't work properly, whole elements are left out of the communication. So it's imperative we go together to do this. By allowing us to take advantage of the cost savings, we're able to more accurately supply the resources in our community. The tower infrastructure we're putting in place has a significant improvement on the coverage that people are going to find inside buildings, which seems like it's a minor thing, but right now, in today's communication environment, it is very feasible that officers don't have communication within the basement of a building, or in the hospitals, or that fire departments can't communicate from floor to floor as they're responding to incidences. This is a huge improvement for the actual quality of communication, in addition to how many different people we can link together.
Thank you. Commissioner Tallon?
Thank you, Chair. I'm fully supportive of the intent of this resolution, but I continue to have concerns about the language, and concerns about whether the language is going to get us in trouble. I've been always told for the years that "whereas's" in a resolution aren't that critical, that the critical part is the "now therefore be it resolved." And if you look at the back of the resolution page, it talks about increasing the surcharge by 70 cents per month per device. That's in our resolution language. And then you look at the Exhibit A, and it talks about 70 cent monthly surcharge on service suppliers' billings to service users, and all of that seems more confusing to me rather than less confusing. It's not the same language, and I'm concerned that if someone was opposed to this issue, that there might be reason for them to say, well, what did you really approve here? Because the language is different between our actual resolution and the exhibit, which is the ballot language. So I could use a little reassurance that we're okay here.
Sure, we'll have Tom comment on that. My understanding is the ballot language is incorporated into the resolution, so it's not like there's two competing elements out there, but go ahead, Tom.
And they're different language then, so.
Sure. When we talk about the "whereas" clauses, those provide the context for the decision that you're making. The decision itself is where you see that in the "now wherefore be it" principle. It does reference the 70 cents per device there. You're only allowed to turn around and impose that surcharge in accordance with state law, and so it's going to be to the extent permitted by law. That's also the provision that turns around and deals with the multi-lines for businesses and how they get assessed charges of 70 cents per line for the first 10 lines, and then one charge for each additional 10 lines, and then it's a question of trunk lines are treated differently. But all of that is set forth in statute. The ballot question itself was cleaned up a little bit. It removed the reference to 800 megahertz. It tried to simplify the language in terms of what was being presented to the public and what they were being asked to approve. It simply states that you're asking, shall Kent County be authorized to assess an additional 70 cents monthly surcharge on communication service suppliers' billings to service users? So I think you're clean in terms of the resolution and the ballot.
So if I could just follow up. So legally, if there is a challenge, our defense says, well, we understand that this is within the context of state statute, even though it's not stated there.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just a brief comment. This is one of these public safety issues that I've been involved with since Commissioner Bolter was 11 years old.
Not that young.
Eleven years old. And so I think we've kicked this can all around, and I believe this is a public safety issue that we need to set up and solve. And I'm happy to be here to vote for this, and, and let's move forward. I, I went to the 800 system with my, with the rapid ambulance business, and I have to tell you, the communication has improved 100 percent. So it's just one of those platforms that we can expand and we can get talk groups on, and so I can talk to the fire departments and the police department directly with one radio for the first time ever. So I think communication is critically important when we go to these scenes, and so I'm going to be supporting this when I get the opportunity to, and I just wanted to make those comments. Yes, Commissioner Bolter was 11 years old.
Very good. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Just, and one clarification of what's not in the language, that since this is a surcharge, am I right in assuming that DDAs and TIFs or no one else is getting a windfall? 100 percent of whatever the telecommunications companies pass along will go towards this, because as Commissioner Talon pointed out, there are people out there that have certain issues they like to harp on, and one of them is so-called windfalls to TIFs, and there are zero in this, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good point. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Mass.
Well, I just, you know, and I think I raised it the last time we talked about it. So we passed this. How much can I talk to my constituents, I guess? And I'm going to go to the city, city commission meetings and explain it, I guess, but I also want to encourage them to endorse it. Can they do that? And can I do that? And can I, as I go door to door, for example, or, you know, as I start talking with people, hey, this is a good thing, this is a good thing?
Yeah.
And I need to be able to say something, it'd be nice if we have a brochure of some sort of.
Well, Tom actually gave us all a memo on this very point.
Yes, he did, yes.
I don't know if you've got that, but I'll let him speak to it, but it is a worthwhile point.
But there's, there's got to be a coordinated effort to sell it.
The county is prohibited from turning around and advocating for or against a candidate or ballot question, so the county cannot take action to endorse or encourage people to vote one way or another. We can turn around and provide factual information to educate people on an issue, okay? As elected officials, you are not bound by that same campaign finance restriction. You can, just like you can endorse another candidate for office, you can take a position individually with respect to whether you are in favor or against a ballot proposal. So you are free to turn around and say what you'd like to say with respect to this question, okay? We just cannot turn around and use public resources to turn around and take a position. So if you wish to turn around and support this question, and support the passage of this question, you can do so on your own individual email, but you can't do so using your county email, because that is a public resource, okay? You can turn around and appear and have a statement on your own letterhead endorsing something. However, we cannot send out something on a county letterhead, okay? So again, we have to turn around and make sure that public resources remain neutral when we turn around and have elections, and that's, that's the provision there. But as elected officials, you are free to turn around and make an endorsement either way.
Okay. Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to lend some comments to this issue. I think it's probably one of the most important issues that our constituents expect to be handled. Most people, when they call 911, they expect they're going to have efficient service. I was initially opposed to this, as most of you know, but a lot of work has, has really went into this. We've consolidated over the years from 12 centers to two. We've worked to lower this initial ask by almost half. We're saving $6 million, and we're getting a much-needed tower that doesn't exist in my district right now, so there are delays. So I think people will want the opportunity to vote on this, it's a public safety issue, and I just wanted to, to extend my appreciation to everyone who worked so hard on this, especially our chairman and the Grand Rapids Chamber, and also undersheriff Young. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Corndyke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to remind everybody that all we're doing here is allowing our constituents to weigh in on the issue. We're just putting this on the ballot individually. We can endorse and support whatever we would choose to, but again, this was a great process, a lot of good work went into this. Thank you to the undersheriff as well, and the sheriff, Stelma, who's been on the authority board with myself for a couple of years, and he does a great job. And also thank you to the chair for vetting this issue very well, and I think this is a good, good thing for the public, and I think it will be something that most likely will pass and be very successful, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Schroll.
Thank you, Chair. I'd also like to thank Chair Salfell for his leadership shepherding this issue through. He said several times this is the most complex issue that he's dealt with since being county commissioner. I certainly agree with that as well. I, that's why I think that the process that we followed has been so critical. And I really appreciate Chair Salfell making sure that all of our questions were answered. We had so many work sessions and emails to different staff members, making sure that all of our questions were answered. And the other thing I really appreciate is that in the course of all these conversations, we've been able to have such a civic and respectful conversation, especially in terms of the broader political arena. Arena, sometimes it doesn't seem like that can still happen, but it certainly does at the local level, and I've just been really honored to be a part of that. In the elevator on the way up, I was with Commissioner Morgan, undersheriff Young, and Sheriff Stelma, and they were talking about how this has been an issue that Sheriff Stelma was dealing with in the 70s, and Commissioner Morgan was dealing with it in the 80s, when I was also 11 years old. And undersheriff Young was dealing with it in the 90s, and so I just was so happy to be in the elevator with them, hearing them say that, because here it is 2016. I'm proud to be a part of actually, hopefully, moving this forwards so that we can, can provide the best service to our citizens, which I think is the reason why all of us are here today. We disagree a lot of the time, and that's fine, I think that makes the process stronger, but the fact is, we're all here for the same reason, and that's to provide great service for our constituents. So thanks to everyone who's been involved.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Shippus.
Thank you, Chair. Very briefly, as I've said before, my constituents are mileage fatigued within the city of Grand Rapids, but I think this, this issue is so important, and upgrading the communications is so important. There was that fire that everybody remembers at the 5th third ballpark a few years ago that involved several different departments trying to put it out. I can't imagine trying to deal with that and not being able to communicate with each other. So yes, I will be supporting this, and I will be supporting this moving forward, so.
I'm not seeing any other comments, I'll just close it out then. I was not 11, Commissioner Morgan was doing this, but I probably was in high school or college, so, so it has been going on a long time. And it is probably the most complex issue I've dealt with since I've been on the board, but it's probably also the most important one that we've dealt with. It is about public safety in the end. So many, well, and, and we have really done a thorough job of looking into this. I went back, I have an electronic calendar that goes back to 2013, and I fed in dispatch, which is how I label my meetings for this, and I had 33 meetings that I've been to since 2013 on this issue. It, but I, but I think we've come to a wonderful solution. The, there's so many people to thank from the sheriffs, Sheriff Stelma and Michelle Young, to all of the township supervisors, all of the cities have been involved in this. The chamber has been instrumental in helping us sort through the issues as we work through the questions. The, the staff here at the county has done tremendous work, and you guys, you've all taken part in those work sessions and gotten involved in this to understand what could be a difficult issue. Now it's down, assuming we pass this down to just the vote of the people, and we will do our best to educate, not advocate on this issue as time goes forward. Daryl is working up a fact sheet, I believe, that will be sent out to the, to all the townships and all the cities, and anybody that wants to look at it, we'll probably be putting that on our website. So it's, it's been a great process, and it's something that really is important to our community, so I'm very proud to have been part of that. So with that, it is a roll call vote, and we will call for the clerk to call. Roll call.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Reeve.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Shippus.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Callman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
No.
Schroll.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Vonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion passes 18 to 1. We move then to item, the next resolution, I should say, and I call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 728-1660, purchase of development rights, Malone B. property.
Score. Score by Commissioner Shippus. Questions or comments on this item? I see none. It was a roll call vote.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Reeve.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Shippus.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Callman.
No.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Vonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion passes. We move then to agenda item number eight, which is public comment. Is there one minute public comment? Is there any public comment today? I see no public comment, so we move to agenda item number nine, which is reports. And I call on any commissioner that has a report. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to briefly note that Commissioner Ponstein and I were privileged to be able to attend the NACO summer conference, and much of my time was spent in sessions related to the stepping up program related to mental health and other issues, transitioning to incarceration and out of, and learned a lot of good things, which I hope to be putting to use in the future. So appreciate the opportunity to attend that.
Good. Glad you were able to, and here's to hear your report. Commissioner Morgan, do you have anything to report on the airport today?
Well, I would like to report that we had our first standalone authority meeting yesterday, and it went well. And the construction is on schedule. I don't know if it's under budget, I hope it's under budget. Phil, under budget?
Under budget.
Okay, great. And so if you get a chance to get out there, give it a look, because I'll tell you, next May, that whole grand hall's going to be something to see, so. And I did meet with some folks wanting to put a statue of Roger, the astronaut Roger B. Chaffee at the airport, so we're looking at that, and so there's a lot of exciting things going on.
And I just saw yesterday, when I got a question from somebody, and maybe this, maybe I missed this in the past, but Gerald R. Ford Airport was rated the top airport in the United States for passengers between 2 and 5 million by some pretty respectable organization, I saw.
Sure.
Yeah. That's very, very, very good to see that, so. Any other reports? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the homeless veterans in Kent County. The room was packed, not because I was there, in spite of the fact I was there, but a lot of key, I think, advocates and stakeholders, and pretty aggressive plans to get these guys out of the streets, and it was, it was a nice meeting, I appreciate the opportunity.
I could not attend that, but I thought of no one better than you, given all your advocacy in that area, so I'm glad you were able to make it. Any other reports? If not, we move then to item number 10, which is miscellaneous. Any commissioner miscellaneous today? Commissioner Callman.
Today begins one of the oldest community festivals in Michigan, and you're all invited to come down south to the Byron Days Festival, which is starting today and throughout the weekend. And if you haven't had enough of throwing candy at children in a parade, you're welcome to join me on Saturday morning, but we'd invite you all to come down and enjoy the Byron Days Festival. It's byrindaysfestival.com for the schedule.
Very good. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Yeah, just to quickly note, Tuesday was the 26th anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act. We had a great event at the Kentwood Library. We have a great partnership, we being disability advocates, my day job, with Kent District Library, and how they continue to strive to be more and more accessible. That's awesome to partner with them. The invitation is for next Wednesday night, though, there's a movie called Life Animated about a young man with autism, and there was an awesome report on the radio last night, I'll send that link out to folks, but it's at Celebration North next Wednesday night, 6:30 PM. It's sponsored by Disart, so it, it looks to be awesome, and so I'll just quit saying awesome, and see you next Wednesday night in the air-conditioned Celebration North.
Very good. Commissioner Mass.
Good, good. I just mentioned, I'm having the staff put a little brochure in your box about Senior Meals name change on the board of Senior Meals, and, and we've moved along to become an affiliate of the Senior Meals of America. So it's a new name change, a new branding, and you'll start hearing and seeing that more often, but I just wanted to mention that. It gives us a little more recognition. Senior Meals is growing, continuing to be an efficient organization.
Thank you, and thanks for your involvement in that as well. Anyone else? I see nothing, I just have one item. Commissioner Voorhees was nice enough to preview this about one month ago today, but, but tonight, tonight is the dedication of the meadows of Millennium Park, and that's obviously out at the park. We, the, you can show up at 5 o'clock to get, they're going to be doing golf court tours of the, of the meadows, and then at 6 o'clock, there's a short dedication ceremony, and I guess I, we put this together this week, which is a proclamation from the county and the board thanking the Sekia family for all that they've done with this meadows, because as you know, they've put millions of dollars into this project. And what's great about that is it's, you know, another example of, I think, doing things right, where you have public and private participation in these county-community projects. And, and that's the way we tend to do it in the county, and I think it's a great way to do it, because it puts everybody, gives everybody a little skin in the game, if you will. So anyway, that is tonight. If you can make it, that would be great. If you need any, if you have any questions about the address or whatever, you can let me or Pam or someone know, but it would be great to see you there. I have nothing else, so with that, I will move to agenda item number 11 and call on Commissioner Shippus.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the chair, to Thursday, August 25, 2016, at 8:30 AM for an official meeting.
Support. And there's support, all in favor indicate the same eye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent Counties.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.